Hello, everyone. It is six o'clock and I call this regular school board meeting to order. Uh, Dr. Salazar, the, uh, would you help us with the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Well, everyone, please rise for the pledge.
If everyone can please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Castillo, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ruben Trevino?
Present.
Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
I am here, Martin Castillo. Mr. Jesús Amaya?
Present.
Ms. Sandra Garcia?
Present.
Ms. Letizia Quintero?
Present.
Mr. Juan Sierra?
Present.
Dr. Gonzalo Salazar?
Present.
In this case, Xavier Fuerte.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Salazar, no one has signed up for public audience or public comment. That is correct?
That is correct, sir.
Excellent. So we have, we go to Roman numeral seven, public hearing, number one, optional flexible school day program, OFSDP acronym. Uh, Dr. Salazar, turn it over to you.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, this evening we comply with one of the requirements of implementing the optional flexible school day program, a program that has served us well and served our students well, yeah, at the College Career and Technology Academy. And here to tell us all about it is Mrs. Zamato, our deputy superintendent for student services. Mrs. Zamato?
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. Um, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. This evening, I'm here to present an optional flexible school day program. This is a program that, uh, we offer at our CCTA center. And under consent agenda tonight, you will find our intent to apply, a recommendation to apply for the 2023-2024 school year. It is a requirement that we present, we hold a public hearing and present our intent to apply. Doesn't work. And also our performance, uh, results, our goals and our performance results for, um, the school year and our goals for next school year. To be eligible to apply for optional flexible, uh, there are four criteria for a student to participate. We mainly work on the first two. The student is at risk of dropping out of school or the student, due to attendance requirements, is denied a credit for one or more classes in which the student has been enrolled. Are the districts, do you use, uh, attending school with an approved early college high school? Or is attending, uh, a school that is an innovative campus plan, under an innovative campus plan? We use, um, first one and the second one, but mostly the first one where a student is at risk of dropping out, they attend the CCTA and optional flexible school day program. To be eligible in our district, a student needs to, must need two more credits in order to graduate for, in the cohort by August, um, of the current school year. So pretty much what it does is our students are behind credits. They come to CCTA, gain some credits, and our goal is to send them back to their home campus to finish off their, their academic year. Uh, students who attend our CCTA are experiencing extenuating circumstances. Most of our students either are out of schoolers, they're pregnant, um, mental health, they're working teens. They work to support their family. Some of them are, are teen parents or have children, so they have to work half a day and they come over to our CCTA, um, campus to be able to work on their credits. To take attendance, a student must be present for forty-five minutes of a day. If a student goes in for less than five for forty-five minutes, then they cannot get any credit or we cannot claim them for attendance purposes. They must, um, the actual number of, of their attendance is based on minutes, it's not based on days. So when a student goes in, they sign in, the time they come in and then the time they leave, if they have to leave early because they have to go to work or, or have to go ta- take care of their children, then it's only by the number of minutes that they attend, uh, at CCTA. It's forty-five minutes or, or more and they cannot exceed ten hours in one school day. We also, uh, hold our students to the same expectations as we have it at, at our campuses. If they are absent, we do make telephone calls, home visits, our truancy officer supports. They haven't heard from a student, hasn't come in a couple of days, the truancy officer supports our, our administrators there. Phone calls or truancy charges that, as needed. The goal there at CCTA is to build relationships, to build relationships with students to continue to come in and keep them from dropping out and having that, that high school diploma and that graduation. This year, we enrolled a hundred and nine students. Doesn't mean that it's a hundred and nine students. You, if you walk in, we will not find a hundred and nine students. Due to their circumstances, some students go in, in the morning, they go over to work and then a new, a new set of students come in. So there's always a movement in that center of students who are coming in and, and, um, and going to, to their work or attending to their families. But overall, with the hundred and nine students who were accepted and participated in this program this year. Our first goal at our CCTA center is to decrease or to reduce our dropout rate. Um, our teachers there assist, assist our students through retrieving credits. They offer tutorials. Also, they, our students are expected for the, to, uh, to take the end of, of course exam. So they are offered tutoring. We offer Saturday Academy to our students. We open up our, our center. Some of our students need tutoring or some of them that do not work on, on a Saturday and they want to come in and work on credits, our CCTA center is open. So our teachers do come in and, and support our students. Our second goal is for industry-based certification, working very closely with, with our CTE program and offering students opportunities. What is their path, our CCTA, in getting that, that, uh, high school diploma? What certifications can they got, can they start working with? Our very popular one right now is the welding program. That's a welding program right now. We're working with Mr. Guerra and getting phlemodomy technicians, nursing assistants. It's very difficult because students have a job and in order for them to participate in CTE, they must be there every day. Um, so right now they're working in commitment, getting some students to commit to a program and to see that if they finish a program and get a certification, then this is some of the salaries that they could be making. And that way they can provide for the family, what they're doing and working on right now. They're looking at the long run, at a goal of what they could be making if they commit to any of these programs. So Mr. Guerra is working with Mr. Leal at the CCTA center, um, to ensure that we're providing some of these IBC certifications for our students. Our goal three is to improve credit accrual process. Each student has, uh, he works on a credit, on working towards their credit. Um, they have a form just like this and just ensuring that they're keeping a log or they're keeping track of how many minutes, what credits do they have and what do they need to work on, what is their next, um, assignment? What is their next module that they need to work on to complete and get credit for that course? And our goal four is using our students to measure their data, their own data, and looking at their weaknesses and their strengths and how can we provide assistance to our students. We administer the mandatory assessments like any other student. Um, there's students are responsible for their data. They keep track of them. If you walk in there and you ask them for a folder, they'll tell you, this is what I'm working on right now. These are the credits that I have and this is how many I need in order for me to complete, um, this course. Ensure teachers and students' data conversations are happening daily. We have those conversations and we monitor and track our student improvement upon the, and, and working on completion of each course. This year, we've improved from twenty-one, twenty-two. We had thirty graduates in May. This May, we had forty graduates that graduated, um, that walked the stage this past graduation. We have some students, there's a question mark there because we don't know how many will complete. They're all working in summer school right now. We have students in summer school working towards their credit and looking over to our August graduation. So we didn't have a, a good number there, but we'll have one hopefully by, what, two more weeks to see how many students have completed their credit. And that's all I have for today. There are any questions?
Any questions from the board?
The optional flexible school day program is only applied at our dropout recovery center and a very important piece that makes, uh, credit recovery possible. We tailor the schedules around the students, our student needs. Um, sometimes I, I wanted to tell you, sometimes kids at the high school see, hey, maybe I can just go over there. But there's an entire committee that works as a gatekeeper and say, no, you're at the right place. Uh, this is not, this, this, you don't have the extenuating circumstances that would allow you to go there. Thank you, Mrs. Zamato.
Thank you, Mrs. Zamato. Moving ahead, uh, Roman numeral eight, district presentation, number one, update on STAR two point oh. Ben Estada, director of assessment, will be, uh, presenting for us.
Yes, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, this evening we, we thought, um, this meeting was a good time to give you a, a refresher. We've been communicating during, in our board updates, um, the, uh, STAR two point oh, the changes that were coming to the state assessment and accountability. Um, we, uh, had invited Mr. Estrada to, to give us, to bring us along on some of the changes, some of the most, um, recent cha- changes and to bring clarity to where we're headed as a state with STAR two point oh and, and of course, results are included in this presentation because as we were preparing, we did receive results. So you're going to see a little bit of the framework, how we got here, and then, uh, Mr. Estrada will also share some of, some of the results. He's just coming back from the assessment conference, so he's fired up.
Oh, it's exciting. Um, thank you, Dr. Salazar. Uh, good evening, Mr. President, uh, board members, Dr. Salazar, cabinet members, and of course, everyone here. Never had such a big audience before. Um, as we mentioned tonight, we will be reviewing the STAR and EOC results for the spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, while the STAR and EOC scores are typically the, the big star of this presentation, um, tonight we want to take the opportunity to introduce a new term that has, uh, come to light in the assessment world. And, uh, this particular term will play a very important role in student performance and accountability. But before we get into, uh, that new term, a little background. So in twenty nineteen, uh, everyone across the state, we were pretty much already geared up to be completely online. Everybody was moving that way. We were also moving that way. Well, TEA and of course, our legislature saw that as well. And, uh, House Bill thirty-nine oh six pretty much made sure that we kept going in that direction. This particular bill basically established a multiple choice cap on our state assessments, meaning that students could only have seventy-five percent of the assessment as a multiple choice. All other questions had to be different types of questions, something that you could do on an online platform that you could not do on paper. So TEA and, and Texas educators, they all got together and they started redesigning, coming up with new test items. Uh, the test items ranged from, you could make, uh, a bar chart with data. You could have short constructed responses. You could, uh, plot a line graph, um, different, uh, drop and drag items, lots of different things that you could do. And over the, the coming years, all of these items were field tested and it was launched successfully in twenty twenty-three, the spring of twenty twenty-three. Also at that time, the accountability system for districts and campuses were also set up to, for changes. Now, of course, TEA recognized that having these two big changes could have a detrimental effect on our accountability rating because these two concepts in it, in itself, converging together, it could really wreak havoc. So what they decided to do was to kind of, to level the playing field a little bit, was they came up with three temporary performance levels for the initial administration for the STAR redesigning grades three through eight. And they named the three performance levels aptly, likely to pass, likely not to pass, and the zone of uncertainty. And as the term, as you can look at that term, that is exactly what it means. We're not exactly sure what's going to happen with this particular zone. But to give you a better idea of what it looks like, let's look at the early guidance directors that were given to us by TEA. So the column on the far left, the raw score, represents the number of questions that a student, uh, answered correctly. And the, uh, column on the right is the likely outcome. So all of these students in green, likely passed. And as you went through and looked at all of the raw scores, you're going to hit a certain cut point. Now, everyone in the green, this is where we get our approaches, meets, and masters. But once you get into the yellow area, you enter into the zone of uncertainty. We're not sure if you're going to pass. We're not sure if you're going to fail. That will be determined by TEA once they look at all of the data and determine what that cut score is going to be. Now, everyone in the orange is likely not to pass. So depending on where your score falls, that is the performance, uh, standard that you got for the spring. Now, to get a better idea of what, what the state is trying to do with this data, I'm going to take you all back to basic statistics one oh one. So imagine you give a test. You're going to have all of the scores lined up and you're going to sort the scores highest to lowest. Okay? Typically, teachers want all of the kids to pass, but that's not always going to happen. So you're going to end up with a distribution of something like this. This is what's considered an ideal score distribution. You're going to have all of your honors kids that stayed up all night studying for the test. They're going to be on this side of the line. Then you're going to have those that didn't study, you know, or went out the night before and they end up on this side of the line. And that hump in the middle is everyone else. Essentially, when you look at the likely passed, the zone of uncertainty and the likely did not pass, this is exactly what it looks like. So that center area, if we were divided in half, that is where that line, that's where TEA is going to adjust that line to determine where the passing standard is going to be. But they have to be very careful because if they move the line too far to the right, it's going to skew, skew the data and it could basically interpret to, to our stakeholders that the test was too easy because we have too many students in the higher range. At the same time, if they move it too far to the left, this could indicate that the test was too hard. We had too many students failing. So they're looking at that data very closely to determine where they're going to place that, that line so that we get this perfect ideal score distribution. All right? So let's take that and let's look at some data. So here is the reading language arts. This is the preliminary results. These are all of our grade levels, grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Everyone in the green, seventy-six percent, if we focus on third grade, seventy-six percent ended up in the likely passed category. Everyone in the red, four percent, fell in the likely did not pass category. Everyone in the gold, kind of peach, peaches color, that twenty percent, that is your zone of uncertainty. All of those students are up for grabs. So when they start moving that line, those, that twenty percent will either jump to the green or they will jump to the red. Now, one of the things that TEA has assured us, the green, uh, number will not go down. It will either stay the same or it will go up once those scores are distributed. The red, again, depends. If everybody in the zone ends up in pass, which is probably not going to happen, then the four percent will go up. And you're going to see that same trend on all of our grade levels. Okay? If we look at the math for the preliminary, it's the exact same thing. Again, if we focus on just third grade, sixty-three percent of our third graders fell into the likely passed category. Four percent, just like the RLA, ended up in likely did not pass. But if you look at the zone of uncertainty, it's a little bit bigger. There's thirty-three percent up for grabs. So those numbers could shift back and forth as they adjust, as they adjust that line on that bell curve. Okay? Now, EOC was just a little bit different. When the scores first came out, TEA did release, or basically put them in the same categories as our elementaries and middle schools. This is the distribution for English one, English two, algebra, biology, and US history. And you will see that they were placed in the category of likely passed, the zone of uncertainty, and likely did not pass. One thing to point out on this, on these particular charts for the spring, you'll notice up at the title, this does not include our December twenty twenty, uh, students that tested in December. The reason for that is because of our block scheduling. We are able to test more students in December. We're one of the few districts that actually can do this. Everyone else kind of waits till the spring to test all of our kids. Once we bring in all of the data, the data is finalized and we can combine everything, these numbers are likely to change. Now, depending on the distribution, they may go up or they may drop a little bit. But again, until we actually, uh, put pen to paper, we're not exactly sure. But for spring, we know that for English one, twenty percent of our students are up for, were, were up for grabs. Now, when the, when the, all of the data went in and all students finished testing, EOC, the spring EOC became priority at TEA. And the reason for that is they needed to set the performance standards because of graduation. We had too many students that needed to know whether they were going to graduate or not. And in order to do that, they had to know whether they passed or whether they failed the test. So, uh, uh, actually last week, late last week, we got the performance, uh, cuts. So now we were able to cut our students or in, basically figure out the met and did not meet. And you can actually see it better side by side. So you can see how the zone actually works into the numbers once they establish that cut point and they get their bell curve. Now, once we have our performance in terms of met and not met, now we can break it down into the approaches, meets, and masters. And this is how the data breaks down in terms of approaches, meets, and masters for English one, English two, algebra, biology, and US history. Now, some of you may notice in the algebra and the biology, our performance, uh, the approaches is at the eighties where we are normally in the low to mid nineties. Part of this is still that we're, we're coming out of the COVID fog. We're still playing catch-up. But of course, you know, I know that our, our curriculum department, our, our academics department is working on this and, and we're making adjustments to make sure we get back to where we were before. And you can see that in US history, uh, we are doing just fine. One of the other things that we do want to point out is that in our masters category for English one and English two, which is typically, um, the harder the two assessments, our passing rates stayed relatively, uh, close to where we were last year. But the number of students that went, that scored at the meets level and at the masters level actually went up. We were normally, usually in the single digits or the low teens or the low, uh, double digits. And we're now at twenty-six percent for English one and we're up at sixteen percent for English two. So this is a good sign that, uh, that we're making those strides to, to get our students ready for those new, uh, exam types. From there, we can also compare our scores to that, uh, the region and the state. And as you can see, for English one and English two, I'm sorry, for English one and, um, yeah, I'm sorry, English two, we are very much in line with our region and the state, very close to it. Uh, algebra, we are just above the region and slightly, and slightly below the state. For biology, we are just below the, the state, but again, above the region. And then, of course, in US history, we are both, bu- above both the region and the state. And again, I do need to remind, uh, everyone that this does not include our December testers. We still have a large number of students that have tested in December that we need to put into the, uh, into these numbers. Now, what happens in the future? So in three, for grades three through eight, TEA will continue to look at this, this data. And again, they're going to apply the same logic to the scores, to the accountability ratings. The top is the per, is the ideal distribution in terms of accountability rating in terms of the eyes of the state. They want to have fewer numbers of, of districts and campuses in the A mark and they want more in, in the B and C range and they want, of course, uh, less numbers in the F and the D category. Now, based on our scores, if we go back, our scores are pretty high. Okay? So what is that going to do to our bell curve in terms of accountability? If these numbers are, remain as they are and they continue to go up, we will skew our accountability to the right. Okay? Now, some of you may ask, it's like, well, Ben, you just said that's a bad thing. For districts and campuses, we fall into the bottom category. If we're to the, to the far right, it's okay with the state. The, the districts and campuses that are on the far left, that's okay with the state because for them, the one on the top, that's their ideal, uh, distribution. So as long as they're okay and we end up on the right, they're going to be okay with that as well. Okay? Are there any questions at this point?
Any questions from the board? I know it's a tough situation getting over the COVID fog. That's a good way to describe it. And I know that we're working really, really hard in academics, um, and I'm sure we're going to get back up there. I always look and compare. I don't even look at the region. I just look at the state and we're always, you know, very competitive, if not better than the state. So I'm sure we're going to get there. Um, hats off to all the hard work that you and your staff are doing. No questions. Dr. Salazar, if you have anything else to add?
I, I would, I just want to add, um, that years ago, we had, the standards kept moving. Uh, every year the standards moved and so it was hard to measure growth. Then the commissioners decided, Commissioner Marath decided, we're going to leave the standard the same for five years. And at the end of this fi- this five years is the, um, the five-year period aligned well with the, uh, with this, uh, movement, uh, this, um, legislation that passed. He, um, Mr. Estrada opened with that piece of legislation that said that we could, not all of the tests could be multiple choice. So it was time to adjust and in advisory committee meetings, we were saying to the commissioner, we are coming, just coming off of COVID. Um, there is, there was a learning, learning loss that occurred during those two years of that awful experience. Um, and so we are, uh, we're barely making, closing the gaps and now we're going to implement. Can we delay this? Can we ease into the raising of the standards? And so, um, there was no interest in, in, in increasing the standard incrementally. Uh, if we're going to continue to measure student growth, we have to set the standard. Uh, and the zone of uncertainty is what this, what TEA is going to use to make those adjustments to distinguish between the, um, A districts, B districts. They will play with those standards, but that will occur at the state level. Um, they were, uh, very, you know, concerned with the, as we, as we went further along into those, that five-year period of set standards, that more and more schools were getting As. And there was also concern that there were some school districts that were getting Bs, but also had Cs, Cs and Ds. Sometimes the size of the district, uh, uh, factored into that. If you're a single high school district with, um, low enrollment, uh, depending on how you did in CCMR at the high school level, you would get As. So they're trying, they are trying to address, uh, so many things in a state that is as wi- as large and as diverse as Texas, that is difficult to accomplish. But they're going to use this zone of uncertainty, a temporary, uh, fix, um, that will help us arrive at setting the standards statewide and, and using an accountability system that gives a rating to all schools, uh, that vary in size and, and demographics. Um, so we will continue to bring you information as we, as we go, as we update our, our data. Uh, August is when TA is expected to set out final ratings, correct?
Correct. Mid, uh, mid-August, if, uh, memory serves.
So now, does anyone have any questions?
I see.
So in August, that'll include all the December data, too?
Yes. Yes. So the, the December data still falls under the previous, um, I guess, the, the previous, um, passing standards. So those students have the approaches, meets, and masters. Um, the, the difference between the spring data and the December data is there's a variable in there that identifies students that are first-time testers and the retesters. So you can't combine the two because you may end up with counting students twice. So it's, it's a filtering process of going through. You can do it manually, but it, it is very time-consuming. And we do have to, to basically go through and just a lot of safety checks to make sure the data is as accurate as possible. And we do have to, to basically go through and just a lot of safety checks to make sure the data is as accurate as possible.
Between now and August, we're going to be doing that internally. And by we, I mean Ben, uh, it's going to be running, running that data. And I'll continue to update you and, and board updates and maybe do, even do another presentation in July.
Thank you, Mr. Estada, thank you, Dr. Salasat, for the, the explanation. Okay, moving along, uh, Roman numeral nine, district reports, Dr. Salasat.
Um, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, we present to you the finance, the finance reports, A through F. Um, I wonder if anyone has any questions on these reports that we bring to you monthly?
I know that the agenda was put out on Board Book and the, uh, board members have had a chance to, to review the reports and, and the consent agenda and action items. But, um, if anyone has any questions regarding the reports at this time? Mr. Henderson.
Uh, could I ask, uh, if we could just go over the capital project funds? Uh, just go through it, I, I remember it, but it's just a lot to follow.
Uh, absolutely, that's actually a, a report that hasn't changed very much over the last couple of months because we haven't added any projects. Uh, but Pablo, will, will you please take us through that, please? That is on page sixty-six. Nope, uh, seventy-one.
Ah, yes. So, uh, uh, one of the, one of the items really on the capital projects, there's two different ones. There ends up being the local capital projects, which is a fund six-nine-eight. And so that ultimately ends up being the local capital projects that we have committed within our reserve for construction. And so that is the, the funding sources that we're going to be utilizing for the future performing arts center. So going through it, what we do have as of, uh, August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two is forty-one million, seven-twenty-five. And what we have committed from that is the architect, the, the performing arts center and the chapter three-one-three revenue has been added, you know, to, to that particular fund. And also the, the roof replacement will be via the project that we'll be funding from that. So based on projected estimates, you know, on, on current year activity, we could see anywhere between twenty-five, twenty-eight million that we could expand. But again, it's one of those things to where we're still going to go through the process of procurement. You know, the only item that we've gone through as far as procurement is the roof replacement at Resaca of the three-point-two million. Everything else really is going to depend on what's the, the schematics and the design is completed by, uh, the architects. And we go out for bid, then we will know where we stand in regards to, uh, that particular project. You know, as of now, like I said, the number that is really set in stone as of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two is the forty-one million, seven-twenty-five. And the reason I say it in that manner is because that is the audited number, because that is the number that, that has been closed within our financial audit, which was completed, you know, this past year. Um, aside from that, you know, that's really the main, the main takeaway from this particular fund. What we do want to continue to do with this fund is any type of chapter three-one-three money, this is what we're going to be including it to be able to keep tabs. You know, there is a chapter three-one-three revenue, you know, uh, schedule that we've provided in the past. And that has been the reconciliation process in which we ended up coming back to, to this forty-one million that we've set back. The, I'm sorry.
Can I clarify something before we go too much further? Um, the reference made to the roof at Resaca Middle School, it is now the roof at Los Cuates Middle School.
Right.
Uh, Resaca is now a new campus. But when we started this, when we went out for these projects, uh, we were replacing the roof on the building that is now going to be occupied by Los Cuates Middle School.
Uh, the other schedule is for fund six-nine-nine, which is again, the other capital project fund that we have. And that is in relation to the twenty-twenty-one, uh, bond projects. So when we initially went out and sold the bonds in twenty-twenty-one for sixty-three million dollars, we had created this particular fund in order to ma- be able to maintain and keep track of all the different projects, you know, that we were going to be addressing. So of all the different projects, the items in green, you know, build the new middle school. You know, the, the, we, we went ahead and have a year-to-date expenditure and outstanding encumbrance of thirty-six million. One of the items that I noticed, you know, in, in updating the schedule is that since we don't have any new particular projects, the amounts have stayed the same. So what I think what I'm going to do in future reports is I'm going to create two different columns. One for the, uh, outstanding encumbrance, which is the purchase order, you know, the amount that was approved, and then a column for the expenditure. If I have them combined right now, when I go in and make a payment, you know, to the vendor, the amount doesn't change because, you know, what was important for me is that we have a total budget of the thirty-six million. So that's in essence, once the project is finally set and done, that's when I'm going to be paying. But I need to be able to separate so that I can show a distinction of the payments or the activity made within the given thirty days. So that was one of the line items that I put in the memo that, you know, even though the, the balance stayed the same, it's because we didn't add any new projects. But we have made payments on all these different projects to the vendors. So the amount has gone down and, you know, payments have been going out. But ultimately, like Dr. Salasat had mentioned earlier, that's really the main reason why the amount hasn't stayed the same overall. The items in green, again, the building in the middle school, near completion with that. The construction of the new ag building, which is everything that we have going on behind Los Cuates. You know, that is also one of the projects that's been board approved. Uh, the completion of the sports field at End of View is also in green. And, and that's one of those items that we also have, uh, highlighted in green. Uh, Los Fresnos High School improvement, that is something that we, again, we went ahead and we re-classed that because that was one of the items that we ended up utilizing. Initially, when we sold the bond in twenty-twenty-one, you know, those improvements that we're going to utilize these bond winnings for, we were able to use SRA funds for. So the five-point-three in expenditures, you know, that we received through SRA, we were able to re-class and not specialize, you know, these particular funding sources, so that freed it up. Um, the building, the all, all-weather track at Liberty Memorial, you know, that item has already been completed. And the mu- the multipurpose center, again, that was one of those things that we were going to go ahead and, and utilize the bond funding for. So we're going to hit and we re-classed the other funding source, which is the local capital project. Uh, overall, if you do compare this report to last year, I mean, last month's report, the amounts didn't change, but the activity, as far as I can provide a report that shows the payments made. But ultimately, we did make payments to our vendors and we are current.
So the purpose for the report was transparency to the board so that you'll be where the capital projects are. Lots of irons in the fire, but we feel an obligation to keep you informed uh, as we, as we pay down on some of, some of these projects. So we'll continue to refine our report, as Mr. Vassalua said, so that we can achieve that transparency that we, we seek.
I believe that would be helpful to the board and, and knowing that and to everyone for transparency purposes. Thank you so much, Mr. Balzaldua. Any other questions? Okay, no questions. Uh, that brings us to Roman numeral ten, consent agenda. We have fourteen consent agenda items. I'm going to give you some time to review the consent agenda items and pull any item, um, that you'd like to pull. Okay, we're not going to pull any items. So, um, consent agenda, uh, do I have a motion? Yep, Mr. Sierra? Coach Amaya?
Good. I move that we approve consent agenda as posted, all fourteen items.
Do I have a second?
Right here, sir.
Mr. Sierra seconds. All those in favor of approving consent agenda as stated on today's agenda, please raise your hand. Consent agenda passes unanimously, seven-zero. This takes us to action items, Roman numeral eleven. Discuss and take action to approve the renewal agreement or contracts for group health, third-party administration, and stop-loss insurance for the period of one-one, twenty-twenty-four through twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia?
Mr. Trevino, I move to approve the renewal contract agreement for the group health, third-party administration and stop-loss insurance for the period January first, twenty-twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, do I have a second? Ms. Quintero, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the renewal agreements or contracts for group health, third-party administration, and stop-loss insurance for the period of one-one, twenty-twenty-four through twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously, seven-o. Number two, discuss and take action to approve additional activity accounts and authorize the superintendent and chief financial officer to act on behalf of the district to complete the required documentation to open the accounts. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll take that, I'll make that motion to approve the additional activity accounts and authorize the superintendent and the chief financial officer to act on behalf of the district to complete the required documentation to open accounts.
Mr. Sierra, do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor of approving the additional activity accounts and authorize superintendent and CFO, chief financial officer to act on behalf of the district to acquire documentations to open the accounts, please raise your hand. The action item passes unanimously, seven-o. Number three, discuss and take action to approve the purchase of white fleet vehicles for the transportation department. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve purchase of our white fleet vehicles for the transportation department, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo, do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the purchase of white fleet vehicles for the transportation department, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously, seven-o. Number four, discuss and take action to designate Mr. Ruben R. Trevino as the delegate for Los Fresnos CISD and Mr. Juan C. Sierra as the alternate for the Tasby Delegate Assembly. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chair, I move that we designate Mr. Ruben R. Trevino as the delegate for Los Fresnos CISD and Mr. Juan C. Sierra as the alternate for the Tasby Delegate Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya, do I have a second? Ms. Quintero, seconds, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of designating Mr. Ruben R. Trevino as the delegate for the Los Fresnos CISD and Mr. Juan C. Sierra as the alternate for the Tasby Delegate Assembly, please raise your hand. I, I voted for myself. It, it passes, thank you. Looking forward to, to being the, uh, designate of that, uh, delegate and I will definitely bring back information for us. All right, number five, discuss and take action to approve the revisions to policy GKD exhibit regarding the facility request de-schedule, schedule adopted in the first reading. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve, sir.
Do I have a second? Ms. Garcia, uh, any discussion? There being no discussion, uh, all those in favor of approving the revisions of policy GKD exhibit regarding the facility request de-schedule adopted in the first reading, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously, seven-o. Number six, discuss and take action to approve out-of-state student travel, ALFHS gear-up college-ready, July sixteenth through the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, San Francisco, California. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, yeah, let me, my glasses are a whack here. Take action to, uh, approve out-of-state student travel, LFHS gear-up college-ready, July sixteenth through the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, San Francisco, California.
Thank you, Mr. Sierra, do I have a second? Ms. Quintero, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the out-of-state, uh, student travel for LFHS gear-up college-ready, July sixteenth through the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, to San Francisco, California, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Sure they're going to have a great time out there, that's a great experience. Number seven, discuss and take action to approve the professional hiring schedule for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, subject to funding availability. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve the professional hiring schedule for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, subject to funding availability.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya, do I have a second? Mr. Sierra, um, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Um, sir, we present this, uh, professional hiring schedule, uh, based on the information we have, uh, now. Uh, we usually wait for the end of the legislative session to bring you any recommendations. Um, there are special sessions that will still occur. So there's a very good chance that we may have to bring this back to you. But for now, the HR department does need to keep moving forward and to advertise what our hiring schedule is. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salasat. Okay, no, uh, was there any other discussion? Yep, Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chair, uh, since it was stated as funding availability, is, when it will be brought back, will it be brought back because of, because of the budget? Or because you just have more specifics in your, in specific?
Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Uh, the, the term funding availability is because we are still projecting out revenues and expenditures. So that piece is, um, so that's why it's subject to funding availability. We, we, we don't have a real clear picture yet on our, on our, uh, revenues. But should the state mandate a teacher pay raise, we would come back. We know that, that if they mandated, that funding would be there. We would bring this item back for that reason. But as far as the adjustment that is included in the professional hiring schedule we present tonight, uh, we will have a budget workshop at this time next week to, to, to give you a clearer picture of that funding availability. We still do need to advertise a hiring schedule, though. No?
No, I, I just need more tutoring because I still don't understand. But it's, uh, you can tutor me later. I, I thought that the, the wording was sufficient that you wouldn't have to bring it back. But it's two different things, so you can, you can say me out of it.
Okay.
Okay. More discussion, all those in favor of approving the professional hiring schedule for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, subject to funding availability, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously, seven-zero. Number eight, discuss and take action to approve EAE slash UIL academic supplements and salary supplements for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion? Ms. Quintero?
Yes, Mr. President, I motion to approve item number eight.
Do I have a second? Mr. Sierra seconds, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving AE, my goodness, this is a tongue twister here. EAE slash UIL academic supplements and salary supplements for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Um, number nine, discuss and take action to approve superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. A, teachers, B, counselor. Do I have a motion? Ms. Quintero?
Yes, I motion to approve and take action to approve the superintendent's personal recommendations for the following positions for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. A, teachers, B, counselor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Garcia, uh, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. A, teachers, and B, counselor, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously.
Sir?
If anyone is here?
Who's second?
Go ahead.
Who's second?
Ms. Garcia. So if any, Ms. Amaya, if anyone is here, uh, that has just joined the Falcon family, can you please rise so that we may say hello? So if any, Ms. Amaya, if anyone is here, uh, that has just joined the Falcon family, can you please rise so that we may say hello? Welcome to the district and you made the right choice. Okay, this brings us to number twelve, uh, Roman numeral twelve in the session. It is a closed session. Number one, discuss all items, uh, as appropriate regarding personnel recommendations. Number two, discuss real estate matters. And number three, consultation with legal counsel regarding legal issues pertaining to the establishment of Los Fresnos C I S D Educational Foundation, including the M O U establishing the nature of the board's relationship and mutually acknowledging the respective future obligations of the board and foundation. It is six fifty, we will break, and then, uh, the board will go out there and, and meet our new Falcon friends. I call this meeting, uh, to order. We are coming back from closed session. It is eight oh five. Um, we've already discussed and, and took action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations. Um, number two, we've authorized administration to proceed with real estate matters discussed in executive session. Is that, is, no, right? We need to, we need to do that? There's no action on that. So that brings us to the third, um, item. Consider and take possible action to authorize presentation of a memorandum of understanding between the district board and the Los Fresnos C I S D Education Foundation Board to formally establish the boundaries between the district and the foundation, establishing the nature of their relationship and mutually acknowledging their respective future obligations to each other. Do I have a motion for that item? Mr. Amaya?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize a presentation of a memorandum of understanding between the district board and the Los Fresnos C I S D Education Foundation Board to formally establish the boundaries between the district and the foundation, establishing the nature of their relationship and mutually acknowledging their respective future obligations to each other.
Do I have a second? Ms. Garcia? Dr. Salasat? Okay. We've got a first and a second, any discussion? There being no discuss? No, okay. There being no discussion, all those in favor of authorizing presentation of a memorandum of understanding M O U between the district board and the Los Fresnos C I S D Education Foundation Board to formally establish the boundaries between the district and the foundation, establishing the nature of their relationship and mutually acknowledging their respective future obligations to each other, please raise your hand. Item passes unanimously, seven oh. Uh, this brings us to, and yes, Dr. Salasat?
Um, on real estate matters, um, would, would, can I respectfully request that you ask to see if we have in there? And if there's no motion made, then we'll, we'll know that at this time the board is taking no action. But, um, would you please?
Yes. So do I have a motion, uh, to take possible action to authorize administration to proceed with real estate matters as discussed in executive session? Is there a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we authorize administration to proceed with the real estate matters as discussed in executive session.
Do I have a second? Mr. Sierra? First and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of authorizing administration to proceed with real estate matters as discussed in executive session, please raise your hand. Okay. We're not gonna take action on that. All right, so there is no action on number two, to authorize administration to proceed with real estate matters as we discussed in executive session. Mr. Amaya? This is in regards to the tenacures that we were discussing.
Correct, the board was going to, that you were going to just think about it.
Yes.
Take time to, take time to consider the request.
Correct, so there is no motion needed. We're just not taking any action.
So now, now.
Can we rescind the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Amaya?
I rescind the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Motion has been rescinded, and there will be no action on this item. You can rescind the second if this per.
For the record, I resign on the second.
Mr. Sierra rescinds his second. Apologies, apologies, guys. Thank you. Thank you, no worries. All right. With that, it brings us to announcements. Dr. Salasat?
Uh, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, on Thursday, June fifteenth through Saturday, June seventeenth, we have the Summer Leadership Institute, our opportunity for us to, uh, accumulate some of the required training credits. Monday, June nineteenth, we have a budget committee meeting starting at six P M. at the Training Center. Um, and Monday, July third through the sixth, we will suspend normal operations for that week. Uh, these are, many of our staff, uh, our staff will be taking their non-working days during this time. And then Monday, July tenth, we have our regularly scheduled school board meeting, uh, here at six P M. Those are all the announcements we have.
Thank you. It is, what time is it? Eight eleven, and I adjourn this meeting.